And I call the order of this regularly scheduled meeting for the 34th City Council, May 5th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. I ask everyone in the audience to please silence your cell phones and communication devices as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Counselmember Inos.
Here.
Counselmember Hamud.
Here.
Counselmember Abraham.
Here.
Counselmember Harris.
Here.
Counselmember Al Sowafi.
Here.
Counselmember Herrick.
Here.
We have it for him. All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Dan Rantham of Guardian Lutheran Church, who will give our invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the invitation.
Of course.
Just want to remind everyone, it's Mother's Day on Sunday, you men that forget sometimes. And our churches, it's also Good Shepherd Sunday, which is pretty cool to have the moms and the Good Shepherd protector providers, so how blessed we are. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you. We're blessed here in Dearborn with all the gifts and blessings and talent of so many people here in our wonderful city. We thank you for all of the elected officials, our first responders, policemen, firemen, our business owners, our residents, and we think especially of the mothers and the important role they play as we celebrate them on Sunday. Bless this meeting, guide all of our leaders, may all decisions be made for the fairness and the good of all people. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, we have a couple of presentations, so we will read them into the record and then we'll take, not really, the adjournment, we'll come down to the, the council will come down and then get some photos with the awardees. So, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first item?
Item number four is resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, acknowledging the 100-year anniversary of the Dearborn Exchange Club and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, the Dearborn Exchange Club is celebrating their 100-year anniversary this Saturday, May 17th. The Exchange Club was established in 1925 and has served as a vital force for our community for the 100 years that they've been in business. Rooted in service and civic engagement, the club focuses on supporting youth, scholarships, school enrichment, assisting veterans, seniors, preventing child abuse, recognizing, I'm sorry, recognizing the work of local law enforcement as well. Their initiatives also include art programming such as health and safety outreach and community fundraising projects, which supports educational opportunities throughout their city. As we celebrate the 100 years of service for the, in 2025, the Exchange Club of Dearborn stands as a testament to enduring the power of volunteerism and civic pride. Their deep and consistent impact across generations has made Dearborn a stronger and more compassionate community. And tonight, we have Mr. Pat Diambrojo from the, from the club. Pat, I'm not sure, I know you're going to take the award back, would you like to say anything regarding association, if you'd like to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Jeremy, President Serini, City Council, George. Thank you for giving us this opportunity tonight to talk about the Dearborn Exchange Club, 100-year anniversary. As President Serini said, we've been around 100 years, we've been doing a lot of many things in this city. There's not many things that we turned down worthwhile. And basically, you know, we're not a huge club, but we raise a lot of money. And I'm not going to ask for any money tonight.
I love my checkbook, Pat.
But I want to thank everybody who has donated to our four major fundraisers a year. We raise about $50,000 to $60,000 a year, and we put all of our money back into this, into the city, wherever it's needed or a request. So, if you have a request that's worthwhile and you can't get it fulfilled, please come and talk to us about it. But the one thing I do want to talk about is this major event, we've been nominated by the Exchange Club of Michigan to host this 100-year anniversary. We're going to have approximately 150 to 200 guests come to our city, and we're going to try to show them what our city's all about, our diversity. So, starting on Friday, we will start out at our new golf course, redone, you know, Dearborn Hills.
That's right.
And we will play golf, and then there's a registration for guests that they, we're using the Holiday Inn Express Suites. And then from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, there's a kickoff convention at Ford Garage. And then we're going to go to a couple burger places. So, we'll be moving people, you know, throughout the city all weekend. On Saturday, the District Exchange Club is going to have a breakfast at Park Place. And then at 8:30, there's a meeting. And then there's, from 9:00 o'clock to 3:00 PM, there's all types of events going on throughout the city. And we've, we've rented shuttle buses and, and then at 6:00, 6:00 PM that night, the presentation, the president's reception at Park Place. There's an open bar, light appetizers, baskets and 50/50 raffles, a photo booth, and at 7:00 PM, the Exchange Club Dearborn 100-year anniversary banquet dinner. So, that goes from 7:00 to 9:30. And then at 9:30, we bring in some music and dancing and a photo booth. And finally, on Sunday, the celebration of life, there's breakfast at Park Place, and then we'll have a closing after that celebration of life. So, as I said, it's, it's a packed weekend. If you don't have anything to do, feel free to come, and we'd love to see everybody there. And I want to thank the city for sponsoring us and participating in this.
Excellent, Pat, thank you so much.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Just to thank you, absolutely, Pat. We're going to get a photo once, once we get down from here from the next one, but we, we can't thank you enough. I, I like the way you operate, the old-fashioned way, when I see you pulling up, I know how to get my checkbook ready. And I know it's going in a good place, I can tell you that, I know it's going in a good place, so we do appreciate it. A city, just like our libraries and our parks, these organizations and these civic organizations do so much that contribute to what our city is today, so we can't thank you enough, Pat, and the entire Exchange Club. If there's any other questions or comments, any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item?
Item number five, resolution by Council President Protem Herrick, supported unanimously, acknowledging the two Senior Volunteers of the Year, Larry Kleeman and Kathleen Rock, for their continued residential support and assistance, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, the council would like to recognize and celebrate Mr. Larry Kleeman and Ms. Kathleen Rock as our 2025 Senior Volunteers of the Year. Their dedication, generosity, and unwavering commitment to supporting fellow senior residents are exemplified the very best of our Dearborn community spirit. Larry and Kathleen have made a meaningful and lastful impact. I extend our deep gratitude for their continued service and thank them for their positive difference they have made in the lives of so many across the city of Dearborn. I know Councilwoman Herrick would like to make a statement?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to our honorees this evening for your decades and hours of volunteerism here in Dearborn, making life better for other seniors and those in their families who I know appreciate your assistance as well. We have dozens of people who volunteer for things like Meals on Wheels and through our programs at the Performing Arts Center in the Senior Division, assisting seniors at their homes through the Meals on Wheels, as well as the programming where they can come to the center and enjoy camaraderie and activities. And none of that would be possible without volunteers like our two honorees today. Each year, I know the Recreation Department has a, has a challenge in identifying out of all those volunteers, who is going to be recognized as the Volunteers of the Year. And we thank you and celebrate your contributions and congratulate you on being selected this year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to, if I may.
Mayor? Absolutely.
To thank both of you once again, I know we were at the luncheon that we had over at the Performing Arts Center, and really thankful for all you do. Our city only functions, obviously because of our employees and staff, but obviously also in necessity to the volunteers that contribute hours and hours. Just a fun fact about Larry that I love so much is that he's a professional baby cuddler. He volunteered many a years doing so, and for anybody in need, please, he knows what he's doing, and so, and I mean that, he volunteered many a years at the local hospital to assist with many a young children, and so, we're thankful for all you both do, year in and year out.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clerk, unanimous roll shall be attached. At this time, then, I'd like to have the council come down, and we will take the Exchange Club and give them their citation, and then we'll have the Volunteers of the Year right after.
It's because your chair's so high.
Is your mother Soudan?
Yes.
I campaigned for it.
I think you're behind it.
Just turn to people.
Everybody's like, "What's happening?"
Everybody squeeze in? Don't get in, let's go.
All right.
Well, I thank you.
We have a backup.
All right, thank you very much for that brief time here to go ahead and present those. There's a lot of good things happening in the community. Mr. Kleeman just reminded me that he's been born and raised in Dearborn, he was born in Keys Hospital, I don't even know if that was, we got to get Jack Tate, is that true, Keys Hospital? All right, just want to make sure, we got to verify. But 35 years, worked for Ford, appreciate it, retired almost 35 years now from Ford, so great community, we have a lot of people that choose Dearborn and remain in Dearborn, want to thank every one of them, and those of you living outside of the area are more than welcome to come in. Dearborn's a great place, we take everybody in, you'll, you'll love it.
They sell cars and homes.
That's right. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item?
Item number six, resolution by Councilmember Hamud, supported unanimously, recognizing May 6th through May 12th, 2025, as National Nurses Week in the city of Dearborn and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. In recognition of National Nurses Week, we honor, we honor the dedication and compassion that is exercised as nurses who serve on the front line of the healthcare system. As the first point of contact for many patients, nurses provide vital care with empathy and professionalism, often during their patient's most vulnerable moments. Their resilience and commitment are essential to advancing public health and strengthening our communities. We extend the gratitude to nurses for their selfless service and tireless efforts. This resolution is requested to take immediate effect, and Councilman Hamud had brought this forward. Councilman Hamud, would you like to make a few remarks?
Yeah, I'd say I think we all have interacted with nurses at one time or another, and I think it's important we take a moment to recognize, you know, the work that they do day in and day out. You know, I think a lot of first responders, we see them daily, but, you know, you don't see a nurse until you really need one. So, and of course, shout out to my wife, who just finished NP school this week, so now she's a nurse practitioner, so congratulations to Celine as well. So, thank you, guys.
Excellent. All right, any other questions or comments? Councilman Harris?
I could, thank you, Council President. I just want to direct this to Councilman Inos. Don't you have a member of the family that's been serving how many decades?
She's been five decades now. 51 years as a nurse, the last 49 at Oakwood Hospital, so.
That's great.
The nurses are the.
Who's that, mom?
Yeah, mom is, yeah. Thank you, mom, you're the best.
You got to thank mom, the pastor told us before, you got to thank mom, this is a big one, that's excellent. Yeah, I, I too have my daughter as a nurse practitioner, and I think this is well, well taken, I mean, as, as the Councilman Hamud indicated, this is the front line and people that you see the most during the day, so, of your care, so we do appreciate them and wanted to recognize them. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number seven, resolution by Councilmember Harris, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of Scott J. Cooker and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Scott Joseph Cooker from a request from the family. We're deeply saddened by the passing of Scott Cooker, a dedicated member of the city family of the city of Dearborn for the last 12 years. Scott was born September 17th, 1961, and left his world on April 19th at the age of 64, leaving behind his wife of 34 years, Janet, his children Donald, Amanda, and the late Laura Jean. In addition, he leaves behind his grandchildren, Mason and Wyatt, sister Karen, two fur babies, Colton and Beretta, appropriate there, as well as many nieces, nephews, cousins, family members, and friends. Scott most recently served as a senior transportation bus driver for senior services. He brought compassion, reliability, and a warm smile to the many residents he served daily. His commitment to the safety, well-being, and independence of our senior community is deeply appreciated, and he serves as an inspiration to us all. Scott was devoted to his family, friends, and his community. He had several passions that he enjoyed in his free time, including hunting, camping, cooking, and woodworking. He was a lover of nature and found peace and serenity in the woods, considering it his church. He had passion for artistry and crafting in its various forms. He had the ability to see something beautiful and transpose it without any template or guide, and he loved to recreate the beauty that can be seen in nature and to reflect that into his woodworking projects. He also considers himself an amateur gunsmith, admiring in detail and craft that goes into the creation as if they were themselves a piece of art. Scott was described as a man of wisdom, understanding, and patience, who had the ability to make those around him feel not only welcome but appreciated for who they are. He was a proud papa and deeply devoted to his grandchildren. He enjoyed picking them up from school, watching them play, sharing his love for model trains with them, and joining them in learning about their own talents and interests. While the man will be incredibly missed, his memory is what will be cherished the most. Scott will be deeply missed and fondly remembered by many for his gentle spirit. May his soul rest in eternal peace. We offer all the most heartfelt sympathy and condolences to the family, friends, and colleagues who had the privilege of working with Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harris. And the unanimous roll shall be attached. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number eight, it's time for public comment.
All right, thank you very much. This, Mr. Clerk, time is 7:25. And the council rules were enacted this term to allow for up to 30 minutes for the public comment prior to our business items to better serve our residents. If anyone would like to address the council, we have council cards on either side, and you can also be recognized by just being acknowledged. Kind reminder, there is a three-minute limitation with a 30-second warning that will be provided by the clerk. Anyone here to speak to the council? Sir, step forward.
Good evening, Council President, members of council, the mayor. Forgive me, this is my first Dearborn City Council meeting, so this is probably my original time to speak, but I had some other items that I came here actually on business today. But for the record, Robert Plasky, I'm from Southgate 12757 Chestnut Street here in Wayne County, and I'm also the at-large member for the Smart Advisory Council representing Wayne County. So, as a personal project, I know that public transportation is very much important, and as I came here in my last comment regarding the work-study session, to improve bus stop safety and making sure that we have proper infrastructure here in our city, I'd like to actually invite every one of you council members to do a ride-along on some of the transportation services here in the community. To my knowledge, I believe you, Mayor Hamud, have done one in the past, so I'm pretty sure you're familiar with kind of the services, but this is a different one. This is specifically really in terms of investing more in transportation, not just in the city of Dearborn, but investing in transportation across our county. There is a ballot measure that is currently being discussed in Wayne County, and it will be taken to voters hopefully in 2026 to approve a countywide ballot measure to improve public transportation and expand it all across our region. It's not just the city of Dearborn that's receiving a lot of businesses coming into the city, there's not, there's so many workers coming in, there's so many new things that are coming into the city day in, kind of like I go to the mayor's State of the City address, Dearborn is growing, without the Dearborn jingle, everywhere is growing, Wayne County is growing. And I would personally invite all of you to do a ride-along with me, not just in our city of Dearborn, but most of all, the neighboring communities to the south and to the west, if you all are interested. I believe I passed my information over to the Council President's secretary, so I'd be happy to connect with you further and your administration to be able to coordinate that, but I would really love to be able to spread awareness on this issue, not just in the city of Dearborn, but across Wayne County, because it's important for everybody. So, I appreciate the time, and this is the last time you'll hear from me, but I appreciate it. You maybe sold me out a house, but I hope that we can get some coordinated.
We do appreciate it, and thank you for coming and making a contact, because there was some issues, and you connecting us to the right people and having a voice for us does matter. So, we do appreciate you taking your job seriously, it does matter, and like you pointed out to me, one of the stops wasn't in the jurisdiction, I didn't know there were different routes, you know, I just, anything's in Dearborn, I want to make sure it's handled, so we do appreciate that, so.
For the record, I do not work for Smart, I actually sit on their board, so I want to make sure that that's recorded on the line, so there's no misconception there, but there are more contacts I can put you in contact with, because there's a couple planners we can talk to about that, and also operations staff, so.
Yes.
Definitely, you know, with my power sitting on the board, you know, I can put you in the right direction, especially Mayor Hamud, if you want to be able to take the lead on that as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Herrick?
Robert, I appreciate, I appreciate you coming today again, and the time that you spent with the Council President, myself, at the community meeting that you hosted a couple, a month ago now, I guess.
I hosted.
Well, you were there, I apologize, you were there. And the time that you take to help promote the Smart Bus System, because for some people, that's a lifeline. You know, in the hometown of Henry Ford, where, you know, almost everybody has a car, we, we sometimes forget there are those who do not have their own transportation, and especially for our seniors who depend on that to get to doctor appointments and go shopping from their homes, it gives them independence that they might not otherwise have. So, we appreciate the Smart Buses and the people who advocate for them, again, reminding us how important they are in our community.
Thank you, Council President, I appreciate that. I will make sure all the meeting days for our advisory councils in the future also get to all of you, so.
Yeah.
One of you can make it, we appreciate it, but, you know, we want to hear more things that are going on in the city of Dearborn, so please, bring it to our committee. If Smart doesn't reach out, we're open. We will definitely take all your concerns.
Thank you so much, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to address the city regarding city business?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
Mayor Hamud. Steve Keybord, Dearborn resident, Bird Street, as well as a TB2 resident at Camp Dearborn and a city employee. I want to first off thank the mayor and administration for all the support at Camp Dearborn over the past, over your administration. The positive changes that we have going on there is amazing. Councilmen's that have visited us out there, our tour, as well as the council president who came out last year, we gave you a tour as well, thank you for that. I'm up here to invite you all to come out to the camp on May 17th, we have multiple events that are going on out at camp. I think you will see positive changes that have occurred. The team has been working endlessly and hard all winter long to bring camp to the next level. So, I just wanted to invite you all to come out to Camp Dearborn on the 17th. Also, we have fireworks on May 24th, if you can't make the 17th, and we have a lot of events planned out this summer, so, again, thank you, all of you, for your support at camp, and looking forward to a fantastic season.
No, we do appreciate it, and we know it's a lot of work, I know that I, myself, I know many of my council members have been up there many times, and I know the mayor has been definitely pointed on reinvestment into Camp Dearborn, and, and you know, a long time ago, I mean, a few years back, there was rumors about selling portions and so on, and we have done nothing but recommitted to Camp Dearborn and trying to get everything up to what is expected. And we do appreciate it, because it's nice when you find a grant and so on and so forth, but you got to be able to implement it, and I know that it's been working, and I know there's challenges too, so, you know, but we're, we're getting there, and we can see during our budget, you know, the golf course doing well, you know, the rental of the cabins are very, very, very high renting, I think they were over 85, 90% renting, so we know that it's working, and hopefully we'll keep continuing to go that direction.
And the new green cabins.
Yeah, the mayor.
They were fantastic, that was good, the green cabins are bringing back, keeping that history.
The green tents were, yeah, the green tents were a sore spot, I know that, I know the mayor, that's something that we learned right away. I mean, I know I had people asking me for fragments of those old tents, they used to love to go up there to take the green tents and repair them. The mayor said, "Look, we got to do something, this, this is not going to work," so, I know the mayor, if you want to speak, and I know you did a little video on the, what we just authorized, the green, the green tents.
Yeah, it's the green cabins now, I guess.
Yeah.
Which give homage to green tents, obviously, we had tent cake, I have it a few years ago, but we got through it. Still the right decision, because they were very dilapidated and back in the 70s. So, we're excited, the electric has been done, the concrete pads have been poured, and I think people are going to be excited to see what's up there come May 17th. And I know that the phones are off the hook on, when we dropped that video announcing that the cabins were there, people were renting them out, all five or 10 of them. And so, it's pretty great to see, and I think we might see more of them.
Excellent, thank you so much for the invite, we'll make sure Jackie sent that calendar invite around to the council.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Councilman Inos?
What time on May 17th?
May 17th, 10:00 AM, 10:00 AM, we'll start the festivities, there's, like I said, there's multiple events that are going on at camp, so you'll be able to see a lot of energy outing at Camp Dearborn, as well as, you have to check out the new upgraded bathrooms as well, which is fantastic, because, you know, that's, we're answering some of the complaints of the customers, and we're, we're listening, so.
Absolutely, that's always a good thing.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments for the council? All right, at this time, we will close the public portion, 7:33. Before we move to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member wished to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, you may proceed.
Resolution, item number nine, resolution in need of offer and support, approving all the items of the consent agenda.
Offered by Councilman Inos, supported by Councilman Abraham. Mr. Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Mayor Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Harris.
Yes.
Councilmember Al Sowafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Councilman Inos.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right. And we go to the next item, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we'll move on to item number 14, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick, approving the minutes of the previous special closed meeting of April 14th, 2025.
All right, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? All right, hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 15, resolution by council members Harris and Inos, approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of April 22nd, 2025. the previous regular meeting of April 22, 2025.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 16, ordinance number 25-1841, introduced by council president Pro Tem Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the water and sewers chapter, chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article One entitled "In General" for rates effective July 1, 2025, resolution by council members Hamood and Paris to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, the water and sewer rates are updated annually as part of our city budget process and must be approved by the city council for implementation. The fiscal year 2026 water and sewer budget and proposed rates are reviewed by the council in April, on April 2nd, and reconfirmed on April 23 of this year. The rate structure methodology remains unchanged for fiscal year 2025, which is 28% of your bill based on fixed costs or infrastructure costs, and 72% based on the usage rate. For residential customers with average uses for 2026, the rates reflect a 3.3% increase, which is about $7.41 per quarter. The standard fire line fixed rates will have an increase of 3% as well. The new rates will take effect July 1, 2025, this is the first of two readings. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, and then I just want to again thank you for the finance department, this is what I was talking about earlier, about breaking it down per quarter, per household, does help allow the resident to understand. Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-1841, an ordinance to amend the water and sewers chapter, chapter 19 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article One entitled "In General" for rates effective July 1, 2025.
All right, and a unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 17, ordinance number 25-1842, introduced by council president Pro Tem Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations chapter, chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending item, amending section 7A entitled food trucks, resolution by council members Enos and Hamood to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, the proposed amendments align with the current ordinance and recently adopted food truck zoning ordinance approved on April 22 of this year to ensure consistency and prevent regulatory gaps. The key amendments include incorporating propane regulations consistent with the new zoning ordinance, a reference applicable in the fire code guidelines, requiring the city clerk to retain a copy of each licensee's state license for the duration of the local license, and to distinguish between, to distinguish between an STFU, which is a category in the state regarding food trucks, and the mobile food establishments. We also added, adding references, titles, and aesthetic changes to make the ordinance easier to navigate and reference. This is the first of two readings, any questions or comments on this? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-1842, an ordinance to amend the licenses and business regulations chapter, chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 7A entitled "Food Trucks."
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 18, ordinance number 25-1843, introduced by council member Hamood, synopsis and ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 7 entitled "Administrative Fees," resolution by council members Herrick and Enos to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, this proposed amendment requested by the council codifies the fees and eligibility criteria for obtaining a birth or death certificate. The amended increases the standard fee from $20 to $25 per record. Seniors requesting their own birth certificate will receive, excuse me, a discounted rate to $15, additional copies will be, remain the same at $5 per additional copy. It also formalizes and regulates the city clerk as the provider of these records, and defines and establishes, in accordance with state law, and establishes a fixed, non-wavable schedule, including for senior discounts. This is the first of two readings. This is just something the council had been working with the clerk as far as to what a lot of the business has done in the clerk's office, and where we can make sure that we were being, charging fair rates compared to our neighboring cities, so this is something that we felt needed to be adjusted. Any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-1843, an ordinance to amend the administrative chapter, chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending Article 7 entitled "Administrative Fees."
All right, and unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item number 19, resolution by council president Sarini and council president Pro Tem Herrick, authorizing the second amendment.
Mr. Clerk, I apologize, this item, mayor was told, the chief had indicated that we're going to draw it at this time? Yes. All right, so, Mr. Romer, you need us to withdraw our offer and support, or how would this best handle procedurally?
Yeah, it's best if the offered support withdraws.
All right, so I will withdraw my offer, Councilwoman Herrick.
I'll withdraw.
And Councilwoman Herrick will withdraw her support, so this will be tabled for the next meeting. Next item.
Item number 20, resolution by council members Enos and Herrick, authorizing the use and closure of West Village Drive between the east and west parking structures adjacent to Peace Park West, and closure of the basement levels of both east and west parking decks and the West Dearborn Downtown Development Authority from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM for the 2025 Dearborn Summer Market, taking place on selected Fridays from June 13, 2025 through August 22, 2025. Also granting a noise ordinance waiver during the Dearborn Summer Market events, and during the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority Downtown Dearborn Movie Nights in Peace Park East on July 26, July 24, and August 21, 2025, and any rescheduled dates throughout the season and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, as we are now getting into our summer time, which is good, hopefully the weather will cooperate, and all the money and we put into the parks, now we've got to have some good festivities there too. So 20, I think we have some screenshots on this, but the 2025 Dearborn Summer Market will be held on Fridays, there you go, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM on June 13, July 11, August 8, with August 22 reserved as a rain date. Each market will feature vendors, live music, family activities, and youth learning opportunities. The West Downtown activities are requesting closures of West Village Drive between the west and east parking lot adjacent decks as normally they do in every year. As well as the, the police and fire and public works departments have reviewed and approved the planned events, and the police will be present at all the events, and cleanup crews will handle the post-event maintenance. So this is a great time of the year, folks, if you do see some festivities and local markets, our Economic Development Department and what they're doing with the parks, and bringing these activities to the city of Dearborn is just going to be enhanced now that the parks are completed, so hopefully we'll, you'll see them out there, and they'll be on the website for you to see the times and dates as well. Any questions or comments? Councilman Hamood?
I think anytime I see a road closing or downtown, I get really happy, because I think it's a much better use of the walking space, so, and I'm going to stand on that. So I think one of the big things that I'd really like admin to pay attention to is, you know, I want to make sure, business owners, I think administration guys are pretty much on board with me with some of this stuff, where it's like, it's not the end of the world if a street closes and pedestrians use it on the weekend for like, an active activity, so, and I think from everything I've seen, everything I've heard, the closures on, next to Wagner have been very successful, especially on the weekends, especially lowering that volume and providing a nicer outdoor kind of area and ambiance, and I think that area between the peace parks, my dream is that we're able to close it and make it one contiguous peace park with walking and things like that, so.
On the anti-road as well.
Yeah, so you know what, hats off to you guys, I hope, this is like a good pilot, and I hope people come out and enjoy the programming that I know the Economic Development Department is going to put together, and hopefully we'll ease up on DPW's work to close up the roads at some point, so thank you, guys.
All right, excellent, Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I know we're all familiar with the Dearborn Summer Market, and some of us about the Dearborn Movie Nights in the east end, but I'd really like to mention that this is a long time in coming in the East Downtown Development Authority area. We've had a lot of things going on over the last several years, as far as what we were going to do with the alleys on the south side, and what we were going to do with that area of Michigan and Maple, and the downtown area to attract businesses and sustain those businesses that are present down there, and have been, you know, hurting for so long, because when City Hall moved, you know, a lot of the businesses were hit also, so I'm really happy to see this, you know, and if you go down there and take a look, Michigan and Maple, hopefully events like this and more to come are going to bring even added more life to East Downtown, and I'm really happy to see this, so thank you.
All right, great, any other comments, questions? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 21, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick, approving a statement of qualifications or an SOQ, list of qualified vendors to perform front-step porch replacement for the term of five years and an amount not expected to exceed $160,000. Also authorizing the add, to add Michigan General Contractors Olson Cement and Top Hat Masonry to the SOQ list as sole contractors to be, to be competitively solicited with related services and requesting immediate effect.
Mr. Clerk, thank you. This program aims to repair and replace hazardous front porches or steps on owner-occupied homes to improve safety, neighborhood appearance, and eliminate areas prone to rodent infestation. The Department of Public, Economic Department, Department of Economic Development, excuse me, in coordination with the purchasing recommends, approving Michigan General Contractors Olson Cement and Top Hat Masonry as initial vendors for the front-step porch replacement program. The contract will not exceed $160,000 annual and is set for a five-year term, while these three contracts will serve as the sole providers. Initially, the city may add qualified vendors to the list as needed. The program funding includes annual community development block grant or CDVG grant funds, and a one-time allocation from the city general fund. The program will continue in CDVG eligible areas throughout the five-year term. I know we might have some comments or questions on this, but I'd like to give a segue to the mayor on this, this is something that I talked to him several times about, that I think is the way great government works, where he took his team and they did neighborhood walks, and exposed that there was a lot of issues with our homes, craftsman-style homes, a lot of them in East Dearborn that have very hazardous type of steps. So mayor, if you'd like to speak on this program, because I know it actually went way over than what we anticipated, what you anticipated to happen.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and so, you know, several months ago, we put out a survey asking who would be in need of a front porch, front step replacement program. We thought we'd get 100, 200, we ended up getting over 1,500 submissions, and so our team has been diligently actually visiting all 1,500 sites to evaluate which is the most in need, and then you had some who maybe had a hairline fracture, or were trying to squeeze.
I got some of those pictures.
Squeeze out a brand-new set of steps. What's beautiful is we're utilizing CDVG for those homes east of Greenfield, general fund dollars for those homes west of Greenfield, to ensure that all homes are eligible. We obviously, this will be the first year where we actually go out there and try to complete, there's no, you know, each site will have a different ranging cost, depending on what the fix is actually going to be in the foundation, and so we're excited to get the first several dozen completed this year, and then have a better understanding and grasp for what this program looks like long-term. But in our neighborhood walks, as you pointed, we noticed, you know, we have 80% of our housing stock is pre-1970, 70% is pre-1959, and so we saw that one of the biggest needs was these front steps that were kind of dilapidated and broken, creating hazard for individuals that would walk into their home, or create a vector situation where you potentially had rats harboring themselves under these broken wooden steps and things like that. So excited to bring along this program for the first time in City of Dearborn, and hopefully it'll be successful. It's taken some time to go through 1,500 applications, but that's just us doing our due diligence.
I do appreciate it, mayor, and it did come about in your walks, right, with your, with your administration?
Yeah, we do neighborhood walks, last year, we do, we walk about 15 to 20 personnel across every neighborhood in the city, we kicked that off already this year, we have them scheduled throughout September, we looked for micro-level issues, a tree stump that's been there for 10 years, a sign that needs to be replaced, a street sign that's no longer visible, and then also looking at property maintenance issues, and one of them was the issue as it pertains to front steps.
No, I do appreciate it, I mean, that's something that I know we talked about before, I mean, getting out into the neighborhood with your team does make a substantial difference, and I can't thank you enough for this, this program, I know there's a lot of people excited about it, and hey, hopefully we'll get through them all, so we do appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Councilman Paris?
Just quickly, are applications still able to be turned in or is closed?
We closed applications, once we kind of hit a threshold, our hope is that as we get through this year, then we can reassess, we'll have an understanding, because of the 1,500, they don't all qualify, and so we'll get a better understanding for the number that we're actually at at the end of this year, once we also have a better understanding for the average cost of replacement, you know, once we're able to do a dozen or two dozen, then we can figure out what the average cost is, and then determine what a cost of a program will really look like on an annual basis.
For a long term.
Correct.
And then for the time starting on this, did you have the, I don't know if you mentioned, mayor?
I think it's this summer, I don't have the exact timeline, but it's this summer.
Yeah, this is just getting the contractors in place, but you're anticipating the summer.
Correct.
All right, Councilman Hamood?
Yeah, I guess, two questions, kind of, one is, I hope we had our director, who's a mason, kind of take a look at some of the stuff on this contract, but, oh, maybe, maybe, so, but more importantly, I guess, I just had a question as far as, since we're going to be doing work on residents' properties, I think it's important that if you guys need assistance with the governance of this, in terms of like, making sure that the contractor's work is quality and stuff like that, I assume it would flow through ECD.
Yeah, this is a program in Neighborhood Enforcement Division, code enforcement, that's where this program is housed alongside CDVG, and obviously they'll be working with the contractors of the building department for the submission of any permits that are required to get the sign-off. So City of Dearborn is not doing the direct work, it's obviously a contractor that the property owner will agree to doing the work, and obviously with sign-off of our building department.
Yeah, I mean, personally, what I worry about is if people start complaining about the work that the contractor did, I want to make sure that we're supervising that contract in a good way to make sure that we can remedy that, so I'm thinking our concrete inspectors or building inspectors?
Building inspectors, they do the inspections and all the work that happens, if it's like one or two-step replacement, I think, I forgot what the exact rule is, I think under three steps, you don't necessarily need a permit, so, two, there we go, but anything that's substantive, obviously needs a permit and such, and obviously, we'll have legal agreements with the property owners to ensure that the city's held on this.
All right, cool.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments? Unanimous roll shall be attached, next item.
Item 22, resolution by council members Herrick and Enos, awarding a contract to Applied Science Inc. in the amount of $686,143 for design and construction services for the Colson Palmer 12-foot storm tunnel rehab project, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk, the Colson Palmer storm line is a 12-foot diameter, nearly two-mile pipe that channels storm water from northeast Dearborn to the Rouge River. A recent condition assessment has been completed, and the next phase is the rehabilitation of it, originally designed to allow storm water to flow freely throughout, throughout the routine with, freely, I'm sorry, without routine maintenance, the tunnel now requires upgrades due to sediment backup and the life of the product as well. The rehabilitation project will include design plans, temporary, I'm sorry, designing temporary and permanent dewatering and sediment removal systems specifying dewatering pumps to restore the pipe to its full capacity during storm events, and preparing big documents, contracts, and ensuring the compliance with federal Davis Bacon and Section 3 requirements. Applied Science Incorporated will provide technical oversight and project management. The Engineering Division recommends awarding the contract of $686,143 for design and construction services. The contract to Applied Sciences Incorporated, the highest rated proposal. Any questions or comments on this? Councilman Hamood?
I think this is going to be awesome as far as a high-impact improvement to the city's stormwater system, but I think the one question that I always get that hopefully we kind of have an answer to is, for a project like this, when can we, based on the current status of it, expect completion or like, an impact to the, like floodwater conveyance?
The contract before use and getting all the construction documents and things put together, then probably go off for a bit upon completion, I imagine the goal and the timeline would be for it to be completed within two years.
Okay.
Correct, it's a fairly large project, 12-foot diameter, stormwater line running along Colson Palmer in the east end of Dearborn, currently 40% of the capacity of the line is not allowed to be utilized because of debris and water that sits inside of it, and so once we clear out the debris and the water and have some level of retention wall at the end near the Rouge River for where the overflow is, and some potential for a pump as well, so we're looking to add about 2.5 million. pump as well. So we're looking to add about 2.5 million gallons of capacity to our storm wire, to our stormwater system upon completion of this project.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is just, just another preventative maintenance issue that we're doing. I mean, when you think about a 12-foot pipe that's never been cleaned out, right, with 40% of it is blocked, this is going to make a huge difference.
I just wanted to point, I want to give credit to the Water and Sewer Division, because when I first came into the city, we met with the water, the staff from the Water Division within DPW, and I asked them for their feedback on what they think went wrong within the flooding in 2021. And one of the first projects he's operated identified was that, hey, we have a 12-foot line that's, that you can't utilize 100%. And so, you know, prior to us having completion of a study to be able to identify a project based on the grand dollars that we received, based on direct input from those who are working the actual system, I think was just, you know, all the credit to them. I just remember that conversation. They did a phenomenal job, and they were absolutely right. I mean, at 2.5 million gallons of capacity, that's not easy to do overnight.
No, absolutely not, no. We do appreciate, like I said earlier, like, you know, we did really hone in as the city is that there's no really one solution to this problem of flooding, but there's multiple solutions, and doing nothing is not an answer. So I do appreciate this, and this is just another one that's coming through that's going to make a huge difference in the long run. So we do appreciate it. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, just to kind of finish it out, though, I think one of the things that I try to stress a lot is, when it comes to these huge infrastructure challenges, I mean, you know, we try to move on as fast as we can, but, you know, people really need to be a little patient as far as, you know, understand what we're doing, understand that the big money we're spending, and understand that the impact won't be immediate, you know, but I appreciate that general timeline. So even though we're spending nearly, it was like over a million dollars on the system right now, you're not going to see that impact for another two years, but at least we're starting on that, you know. This is kind of like the whole thing. So we do have to start at some point, and I really appreciate that we're actually starting to take this seriously, which I think is a huge pledge that all of us took when we ran for office last time.
All right, excellent. Any other comments or questions? Okay, unanimous rule should be attached. Next item.
Item 23, resolution by council members Parris and Herrick, awarding a one-year contract with one one-year renewal option available to eminent contracting LLC in the amount of $3,115,985 for street, alley, and sidewalk replacement. Also authorizing the city engineer to execute all change orders or modifications and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city performs annual street, alley, and sidewalk pavement replacement to address spot repairs on major and local roads, fix sewer and water drain structures, and removes sidewalk trip hazards that caused by city trees. Purchasing on behalf of the Engineering Division recommends awarding a contract to eminent contracting LLC an amount of $3,115,985 as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The contract will cover approximately 900 pavement repairs and 200 sidewalk replacements citywide. The council approval is requested with immediate effect to ensure timely project implementation, and authorizing, authorization is also requested for the city engineer to execute any change orders and modifications. So this is another good program, Mayor, that before your administration took over, I think is highlighted. In the past, if you have a city sidewalk in front of you that was cracked, the city would replace it. They would usually charge you half the cost of it because it's on the easement. Over since the administration has took over, there has been no charge, charges for this type of work. Is that correct, Mayor?
Correct.
Yeah, so this is a big deal. I know in some other cities too, not only they charge you, 50% are charging full charges and also even charging you permit fees. So, you know, it is the city sidewalk, so we want to maintain it. So I do appreciate that. This company, is this DPW? Who's here on this contract? Okay. Thank you, Director. I just wanted to find out if this is, and I do appreciate this. I just wanted to find out regarding this company, if they're a first-time contractor with us. I haven't seen their name as well.
Tim Wilkins, DPW Director. Eminent has done other projects with us, just not to this scope, and they were the lowest bid on this project, and Zenega was on second up.
Yeah, Zenega, I think we've seen them many times.
Last year, they were our contractor.
Which is good, because like we said, we had some projects with Zenega too that, you know, we had to stay managing the contracts. A lot of it was water spraying during construction aspect. So no, we're always looking for some aspects where we can entertain. Director Kennedy, have something to add?
I'm just here representing purchasing. Mr. Rosinski's sick today. So, when you asked about that, I just wanted to mention we had eight bids, eight, eight, not one, but eight. So we had a really good turnout, and you can see the price ranges savings are roughly 30% from the highest to the lowest.
Yeah, no, I appreciate this, and I agree with you. Some of our residents would be shocked. I mean, Tim, you've been here a long time, where you could see the same exact work where there could be, you know, 30% difference, million dollars difference. So, but it does, you know, like we said, and my colleagues have all been echoing, and I do appreciate the purchasing taking heart to this, that the more bids you get, the more competitive it gets. So to get eight and see them in this line is appreciative. But I was just wondering, because it is a large contract and it is a new, actually qualified winner, but they've worked with us before. So I just wanted to make sure.
Much smaller.
I mean, you know, you've been here, Director, for a while. We had some issues with engineering where we have city streets looking like caterpillars because of the, it's not happening no more, right?
No, no. That was not the cement contractor.
I know, I know, but you can't make that up. I know, but that's designed, because somebody didn't say, let's go back a little further. We have some areas where we have substantial dips because we say we have to be at a zero entry at the bottom.
Yep.
All that means in contracting language is you got to go a little farther back instead of making these dips. So I, and I appreciate that. I mean, we learn from these mistakes, but we want to make sure we go forward and don't make them again. So I do appreciate it. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. Director, what are some of the quality control measures that you have in place for maybe regard to the performance of the work for the sidewalks?
Performance of the work for the sidewalks? So first off, all concrete is tested, right? We take samples of the concrete, and it is tested at seven days, 14 days, and 21 days. They test it to make sure that it hits the PSI standard during control. And then as far as finish?
That's what I'm really focused on is after they're done with the work, sometimes not to the standard. I know I looked at some of them.
Well, it's not that it's not to the standard. There's actually been, you're talking about the shaling. That is a statewide issue. That is not a Dearborn thing or Dearborn's contract issue. I just received a piece from Allen Park where the mayor actually put out something on that. It's the supplier, but there's always a battle between supplier, what they've delivered, and what is finished in the ground. So we are working on that, but our quality control is top-notch, and we do review all pores as well as measure them to make sure that it meets the amount that we are paying for.
Also, with the budget that was approved, there was two full-time seasonal six-month employees within the engineering department who also go out and help measure the concrete that's been poured to ensure that we're not overpaying and overseeing.
Yeah, that's new. That's definitely new.
Two new inspectors, part-time, to try to cover this.
What is the rework process if they don't do it right the first time?
The rework process? It is report.
By the same contractor?
Yes.
Is it extra cost to us?
No.
No, that's like a warranty, right?
It is a warranty.
Is that what you're inquiring about, warranty work? So, yeah, the question is just basically, you know, are we having somebody follow up if there is issues with the contract? Yeah, that's, yeah, but it's a good question, because we've had issues. I think there's one right now that I sent to Nicole. I liked that video, by the way, with Nicole, saying she's the director. Is she the director now?
No, but she could be. The director works.
I seen that video, and I was like, is it Tim? And then it went to her. I like that. No, I know, I know. You guys are doing a great job. But no, Councilman Elswafi's question is very pointed, and I agree with it as far as managing the contracts, but I think we've learned from that in the past, and we are holding them accountable. It's not, you get a check and you pour the cement and then it disforms or doesn't, doesn't come to the right. Like you indicated, shaling or so on and so forth, it has to be redone.
Yep.
Councilman Parris?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to ask about a little bit of a difference that I see in the agenda item, number 23, and in the backup material, just for clarification. The agenda item says for street, alley, and sidewalk replacement. I just wanted to ask, is this including then any alley work that we're going to go ahead and repave over gravel alleys anyway?
Maybe, maybe not. Depends if we did work there. Depends on where it was to. A lot of this has to do with water main replacement and sewer replacement. So if we had damaged sewers, we had to cut roads out, alley sections out, things like that, that's what we tried to do with the repair contract.
Okay, because I understand that there are some alleys that we have not paved because there is some infrastructure underneath and the means to be able to access that. But I'm just wondering too, we have alleys in both ends of town that residents still would like to inquire and see when a timeline might be to go ahead and get alleys serviced.
That is dependent on sewer and water, water main replacement. Some of our alleys still carry water main behind the residents. So we wouldn't want to pour an alley if in the next 10 years we're going to do the water main, right? It depends on the schedule we have laid out. We want to pave them all. That is a priority of this administration as well as us.
Yeah, so we've actually been having conversations the last few weeks about evaluating all the alleyways across the city to determine which can be paved, which should remain gravel. And so the team is actually taking a look at that, and they're going to bring forward a proposal for us to evaluate. And then to Tim's point, if there's some that have water mains that have to be replaced, we'll count time it out. But if there are certain alleyways, because we see we can throw away some of the annual maintenance away, because, you know, we're going to move over to new gravel, I'd rather just pour and be done with it for, you know, 20 years and not, and then I free up just more staff time on an annual basis. So the team is currently coming up with a proposal to evaluate that.
No, we agree. And then to the councilman's point too, you know, before your administration took over, in the past, they were doing the alleys every other year, and that's suspended for about 15, 20 years. So I know that we requested that in the last council.
It's not going to be a cheap project.
Yeah, no, it's not.
But we're evaluating, and now I know Majid and Saoud are actually looking at it, and they're going to bring forward proposals soon.
Absolutely.
Well, of course, you know, because there's a lot of alleys that are used by residents as the only means to be able to get to their garage or their property.
That's right.
So, yeah, I appreciate that answer. I just wanted to follow up on that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Director. Unanimous rule should be attached. Next item.
Item 25, resolution by council members Enos and Herrick approving the application of Great Lakes Fireworks LLC to conduct a fireworks display at the privately-owned Dearborn Country Club at 800 North Military.
Sorry, Mr. Clerk, sorry. I think, did we do 24?
Yeah, we missed 24.
Okay, we'll go back up to number 24.
No problem.
Resolution by council members Parris and Herrick, awarding a contract to PK Contracting, Inc., in the amount of $292,957.80 for a transverse pavement markings and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Pavement markings on city streets have been faded and must be refreshed to ensure our safety of both pedestrians and our motorists. Purchasing on behalf of the Department of Public Works and Facilities Engineering Division recommends awarding the contract to traverse paving marking 2025, contract to PK Contracting in the amount of $292,957.80. PK Contracting was the sole responsive and responsible bidder and has a history of satisfactory performance within the city. The council authorization is requested to be immediate effect to proceed properly. I know there was questions around the committee, the whole regarding this, and we do appreciate the answers regarding the quality that's required, and this is not a normal painting contract. Streets have a different specification, and that's why there's not too many vendors that do do it. So we do appreciate it. I'm satisfied with that answer. Any questions or comments? Okay, unanimous rule should be attached. Next item.
And now we're on 25.
There you go.
Resolution by council members Enos and Herrick approving the application of Great Lakes Fireworks LLC to conduct a fireworks display in the privately-owned Dearborn Country Club on June 21, 2025 at approximately 10:00 PM. Also granting a noise ordinance waiver for the duration of the fireworks display and authorizing the fire chief to set rain dates, excuse me, as needed and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Country Club is planning to host its annual fireworks display Friday, June 21, 2025, approximately 10:00 PM as part of their annual evening event. The display will take place at the country club northeast of the country club house, also requesting temporary waiver of noise ordinance and that the council gives the fire chief authority to set rain dates as needed. This is a great time of the year where we see many, many of these fireworks and additions happening throughout the city. We just need the weather to cooperate a little bit more and get some heat out there. But it's a great time, great event, so if anybody does golf or does check out the Dearborn Country Club, it is a gem in our city, so they're going to do a great job. Sorry?
100 years this year.
100 years this year? I didn't even know that. That's excellent. Councilman Parris?
And also, and I appreciate the mayor bringing that up of about the 100-year anniversary, but also they have been on the National Register of Historic Places designation recently.
Well, that's great.
So, I mean, there's one, I think it's 10 within the city, or eight within the city. So congratulations to them.
Absolutely, thank you. Enjoy the fireworks where you can. We always do a good job having fireworks displayed. Unanimous rule should be attached. Next item.
Item 26, resolution by council members Abraham and Herrick approving the application of Zambelli fireworks to conduct fireworks display at Greenfield Village, 20,900 Oakwood Boulevard on July 2, 3, 4, and 5, 2025 at 10:00 PM. Also granting a noise ordinance waiver for the duration of the fireworks display and authorizing the fire chief to set rain dates as needed and requesting immediate effect.
All right, another fireworks display. Greenfield Village is hosting their annual Salute America. The Dearborn Symphony Orchestra performs, followed by fireworks on the finale. The Greenfield Village is seeking the city council approval for fireworks display on June, on July 2, July 3, July 4, of course, July 5 at 10:00 PM. The fire marshal has reviewed the plan and has approved of the setup and emergency planning as well. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. Unanimous rule should be attached. Next item.
Item 27, resolution by council members Herrick and Enos authorizing to accept the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services grant in the amount of $1 million with no local match to fund the launch of the RX Kids program in Dearborn for the budget agreement dates of August 31, 2024 through August 30, 2025. Also authorizing the finance director to recognize the grant funding in the amount of $1 million in the public health intergovernmental revenue, federal other account, and appropriate the same in the public health, health and welfare, undistributed appropriations account and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Very exciting news. RX Kids is a public health and anti-poverty initiative that provides universal unconditional cash support to all pregnant individuals and infants and participating cities. This piloted program in Flint in 2024, the program has shown measurable improvements in maternal and infant health, family financial stability, and public trust in health and government systems, led by Michigan State University, University's Pediatrics Public Health Initiative, and the University of Michigan's Poverty Solutions and Administrative by GiveDirect. RX Kids combines the state's fund and provides up to $4,500 to mother and infant pair. Dearborn will implement this program using this successful model. The city of Dearborn has been awarded $1 million by the Department of Health and Human Services grant to support and launch this program. The grant period runs through August 34, 2024, to August 30, 2025. So I know there's, this was a big deal, Mayor, and we have our health department, health director up here, and I know, Mayor, this is something that was a big splash at the state of the city that you did was phenomenal. I know that my son is asking if he can get any retroactive back for his two children. This is a great deal. So, Mayor, would you like to kick it off?
I'm a lot of this.
That's your director?
We've been doing a lot of the work for the last year and a half now on this.
Yeah, this is a big deal. We do appreciate it, and we want you to give us a little bit more information. It's a wonderful thing for Dearborn residents.
Yeah, we're excited. Ali, I'm the public health director. As, you know, the agenda item sort of listed, RX Kids is a huge program. I hope you all have heard about it. If you haven't, I hope since after the mayor's announcement, the state of the city went and looked it up. I know that I've also been reached out to by many residents asking about retroactive payments. Here's the thing, once we announce it, though, if you have a kid who's six months old or younger and they reach a cutoff date, they will be eligible. So not everyone's going to be completely cut off. We're hoping to launch it late summer, 2025. What's that?
Six months or six years?
Six months, six months old. But if the council gives us more money over the next couple of years, maybe it'll be six years.
You got this million dollars from somewhere. We appreciate that.
It's, this is, this is one of the best interventions you could do from a public health perspective. I remember I was in my car driving a couple summers ago in 2022, and I heard that Flint was doing this program, and I just smiled ear to ear. I couldn't imagine the city of Dearborn would launch a program like this. We, again, have gotten so many funds from different sources. This is a million dollars here. There's about $4 million coming from other sources, the county, different philanthropy arms. We, as a department, have received money as well that'll be going towards this effort. So this is an effort that's going to contribute over $16 million to the city of Dearborn at no expense to the taxpayer. So, once again, every dollar invested in public health is returning that 20 to 25, which you might have to revise that estimate.
Oh, for sure, for sure. What your department has been doing is astonishing, and again, to the the mayor's leadership of, in his background in health and making sure that everything looked in health policy when we're doing, doing anything. This is, this is a really big deal. So we do appreciate it and it's very exciting. I mean, it, I think the federal government started to copy you. I know it's the.
I know. A week after I said it, it was funny. I saw a lot of comments on Facebook saying, you know, a lot of really unintelligent remarks. And then I saw Donald Trump come out saying, hey, I think we should offer $5,000 to mothers to have children.
Overnight.
And all of a sudden, a lot of those people on social media went quiet. And so I think this is volumes. You know, it's the right public health decision. It's the right public health initiative and we have the right leadership who's been working for a year and a half. Dearborn almost did not make it to where we are today.
That's right.
But Ali has been enlancing, advocating for the resources that came to the overall program, working side by side with Dr. Mona Hannah. Obviously, he's been meeting with Wayne County to secure those funds, with our federal legislators to secure those funds, and he's been meeting with the philanthropists and the donors who are willing to contribute dollars, largely because of the leadership of Ali Abizid, our Public Health Director. So we're thankful. It's exciting. We're very close to securing at least this program for two years. And that is the hopes of the whole program to basically demonstrate to the state of Michigan its worthiness to establish this program full time. And so that's what we hope is the trajectory.
Yeah, it's a great plan. It's a great plan. There was a lot of questions regarding the duration and how long ago. And I agree with you. We have to start somewhere and show the need and the use. And, you know, for myself, five, having five children, I mean, this really, I can tell you, I mean, you can go back. I remember when the stroller used to cost like $25. The last one was like 500 bucks, right? So things are very costly for infants, formula, care. You know, there's a lot involved into, into a child and it gets them going. And I know that another initiative we had, Mayor, was the books to the house for the kids.
The Dollar Barn Imagination Library, which delivers tens of thousands of books today.
That's perpetual.
It's still open. Everybody can sign up. Ali, can you explain when would the expected mother receive the first payment? Because I still see some troubling comments of like, I just got to show a pregnancy stick and I can get a check. Can you explain when the mother would receive the first payment and then when the other payment's hit?
So the way that RX Kids is administered, and it's administered by an entity called GiveDirectly, which does this all around the world. And again, we have the legitimacy of Dr. Mona Hannah, who's an internationally renowned public health expert physician and a bunch of other things. So the way that RX Kids is designed is that at 16 weeks pregnant, once you get 16 weeks pregnancy, you're eligible to receive a $1,500 payment at 20 weeks pregnancy. And then once that kid is born, you get 500 a month, every single month for the first 12 months. That's how it's designed typically. In Dearborn, we've secured enough funds to be able to do it for six months. And so 1,500 at 20 weeks pregnancy plus 500 a month for the first six months, that comes out to 4,500 for each kid, straight, universal, unconditional. And the benefits already in Flint are showing just remarkable benefits across health, economic security and stability.
Absolutely.
Housing stability, even, you know, some things that, you know, Dr. Mona, I'll let her break the news on, but including things related to democracy and civic engagement, which this program is doing all of it.
Outstanding. I can't thank you enough. Councilman Al Swafi?
Thank you, Council President. Director, just for clarification, this is not income based, correct?
It's not.
I got some questions related. That's great. Okay.
Universal. Because as the council president said, it's expensive for everyone. Poverty spikes right before a kid is born for all families. Costs and expenses increase. And also, people don't realize that making programs income based costs a lot of money. I'd rather that money go to families. Dr. Mona agrees clearly. And so, you know, if you were to do an income based program, it's going to cost a ton of money.
Absolutely. No, I agree.
To figure out who's eligible and who's not.
I think the mayor mentioned that at the state of the city address as well, but I just wanted to clarify it.
Yeah. And I want to say that we've been working, Ali's been working on this for like 18 months. And at one point, we were challenged to just pick some zip codes where we wanted to roll out the program because we wouldn't be able to fund the program for the whole city.
Yeah.
But we pushed back and we told ourselves, we think we have the ability to raise the gap, which would ensure that we can have this citywide. And obviously, we might have from a 12-month program to a six-month program. Pontiac just announced a six-month program actually this week. And so that six-month program is still very rigorous. And because we just have a pure volume of babies each year, you know, so it also makes it a little bit more expensive for the city of Dearborn because you can fund, you know, seven, eight, nine cities for the same cost as the city of Dearborn.
That's right. Appreciate that. Councilman Wood?
Just one thing I'm seeing here on the information, does say budget agreement start date is August 31, 2024. I assume that's supposed to be 2025?
I don't know. I was confused by that.
That's specifically for the $1 million earmark from Senator Peters' office. We got to get that out of the door to RX Kids by 2025, by, by that date.
Says 20. Okay. All right, if the dates are all good, then fine.
Yeah, no, I read them. They're good.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other question? Director, we can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
I know there's more to come. I know I joke around about your office a lot, but whatever you're doing in there, it works. It's working because you're getting this stuff done. We do appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And we'll have a lot more information soon.
I know you will. We appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Okay, unanimous rule shall be attached. Next item.
That concludes tonight's agenda.
All right. Before we open it to my colleagues, I had just a small thing. I've been on the council for some time now, 12, 13 years or so, 12 years now. Goes by quick. I have never really been a birthday shout-out person, but I can tell you, this last, this weekend, my mom turned 74. And we took everybody over to her house in Spring Wells and had a little breakfast and a cake with the grandchildren, which are her great-grandchildren, my grandchildren. Tremendous time. And it just makes you reflect, you know, what life is about and what you're doing and about giving back. And you could just see the circle. It was, it was a tremendous time. So those of you that, you know, are still blessed to have your parents or grandparents and so on and so forth, my kids know that was a mandate. They didn't show up. There was consequences. There's a lot of people complaining. I don't know. Grandma's house is small, you know. Yeah, those things don't matter. Those, that, that hour or time you spend, it's tremendous. I know that the weather's turning. We're getting a chance to go outside and do more things. But just remember, I mean, family is very, very important and it's, it's a great thing to do. So to my mom, I just wanted to tell her happy, happy, happy 74th birthday. I know that she's had some normal routine age surgery-related aspects that, you know, sometimes it gets you down, but those of you that do know, know her, she's a fighter, always has been, always will be. And I got to tell her, the gentleman that was here said he worked on her campaign, our senior volunteer of the year. So I normally never mention family birthdays because I just never really do it, I figure. But this time, something was different, you know, for 74 for mom and having everybody over. And I think it's because everybody complied. All my kids showed up and everybody came and it was a great time to spend. So I wish everybody to have a great spring and summer time, great time to get out and enjoy your parks and get some exercise and spend time with the family. So happy birthday, Mom. That's all I have for me. Counsel, anything for my colleagues?
I have one.
Councilman Abraham.
I don't know if this is for Wayne County or maybe the mayor. So where I saw the construction over on Greenfield near the fire station, it looked like they were revamping the pump station there. I know there's been some serious problems with water and flooding under the vibe out there. I was really hopeful when I saw the construction that maybe they're finally taking corrective action to do some backup generators so that when we lose power during the rain, we still have access for our thoroughfare for our fire and safety equipment.
Tim Hawkins, DPW Director. Yes, that's Wayne County. They're actually looking into that pump station right now. I don't have an outcome. I can contact them tomorrow to see what they've found, but they have been investigating that station for a while now with the flooding and the things that have happened there. I don't know if we're getting new pumps. I don't know if they're cleaning the lines that they feed to, right? Because pumps might be working, but if it's got nowhere to put the water. So I know they've been investigating. I know they pumped it down, but I don't know what they've come to as an answer.
Anything you find out, I guess, would be great because if they're doing work there, we should obviously make a push to get a real corrective action plan so that doesn't flood every time it rains and we don't lose fire routes.
I will reach out and respond back as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Amer. Thank you, Director. That's obviously something that's been going on for some time, so we do appreciate that. Any other questions, comments from my colleagues? Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. Just going by recently, again, down in the south end off of Wyoming, south of Michigan Avenue, something that's absent in that area that I just want to make sure people understand that I, I've made mention of this a number of times and now we have two properties that have been demolished off of Wyoming, two eyesores that were really not contributing too much to that particular area. So I got to say thank you for bringing attention to that and bringing those structures down. It was a long time in coming, just like the Oatman Apartments and some other properties that we're looking at in Dearborn to do. I'm really glad to see that, that property, those two properties gone. I'd just like to address an issue and I don't know if our DPW director could have a couple moments just to address the issue. I know priority waste is our trash hauler, you know, garbage pickup. Essential services in Dearborn, it's paramount to public health. It's paramount to the safety of our residents and our expectations. But hearing a lot of complaints lately, again, in different areas of the city about garbage pickup until late hours of the night and even not until the next day or even two days, and it just given me a reflection back to a year ago where we were having problems, seemed to be getting better. And now is priority getting new garbage trucks? I'm hearing that they have a new fleet coming of.
No, they have a, Tim Hawkins, DPW Director, they have a new fleet sitting in the lot over there and they're actually having, just like us, computer problems with this new fleet of vehicles coming online. The issue that you're seeing right now is the tonnage. It's not a G, or, sorry, a priority issue. It's the tonnage. The last delay that's almost a day late was the tonnage because we had beautiful 70-degree turnaround at the turn between April to May. Everybody did yard work. Everybody did garage cleanouts. Everybody got rid of that couch that was sitting there. It was a massive amount of tonnage on every block, whether it was yard waste or whether it was the old spring cleaning. It's bound to happen and it happens every year. We forget that spring cleaning dump out. Yes, we had a problem with them, but as long as I've been a resident here, spring cleaning was a dump out mess every turn of the new spring.
And I think with the heavy rainfall these last few days, you see people's grass is kind of exploding right now. I think you're going to see the heavy yard waste coming out this next week, which is good. We want them to mow, to mow. But honestly, like, I saw some of the comments about late pickups. I'm, I'm encouraged that they went to work till 9:30 at night.
Yeah.
To pick up that garbage and then just call it quits at 6:00. And so I get it. It might be frustrating. Might make some noise. But you know what? They didn't just go home. They stuck it out and they tried completing the route. And I think that, to me, is, is better than the turnaround.
Well, instead too of hearing the comments on social media, who do I call? What do I do? Who do they call? You know, their trash isn't picked up within a reasonable period of time, say 5, 6 o'clock or the next day.
We have a call center that is more than eligible to receive those calls and direct them to us. You know, anytime you can call, you know, 313-943-2150.
You can just call 311 now.
Oh, I'm sorry? And then you can call the 311?
One-stop shop.
One-stop shop. Yeah. Some people do have priorities number. I know our neighborhood liaison's flashered everywhere. You can also call priority directly or you can call 311.
Right. Or we could just, as you indicated, it's a little bit of patience, as the director's indicating. It's something that's happened all the time. People on, you know, on the internet, I was going to mention that, my wife said not to mention, but the people on the internet, I mean, behind the keyboard, you know, they, they have a lot of time to check all of this. And I defer to the mayor's aspect. The fact that they stayed to 9:30 and since the director's here testifies, basically testifies the fact this happens every year around this time.
It does.
I think it's a good thing. I think it's a pointed question that there's no issues regarding infrastructure. Absolutely, I agree. There's no infrastructure issue. In the past, there was, there was hiring freeze or it's issues.
Correct.
I mean, they took over the company and fired everybody. That wasn't, you know, that usually doesn't look, doesn't actually end up well.
And inadequate.
So we do appreciate that aspect.
And inadequate equipment back then.
That's correct. That's correct.
And if I could, I'm all set here for this, but I do have a couple comments to make.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Councilman. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. If I could, just a reminder for everyone that we just recently had International Firefighters Day on May 4. You know, the physical and mental toll, potential loss of life and occupational hazards affecting firefighters everywhere and including here in the city of Dearborn, just bringing recognition of the job that they are tasked to do on a day in and day out basis. Speaking of the firefighters, you got the burn drive coming up on May 26. The raffle tickets are available at the fire stations and from a number of people around the city. Pat Di Ambrosio is still here in the audience, I think. He's, he's somebody that has tickets also. We could all use, what, $40,000 in cash or a new vehicle from Matic Chevrolet, I'm sure. But there are a lot of prizes. I believe there's 25 prizes from this raffle. Speaking about public safety too, I want to make mention that Sergeant Chris Hampton Memorial 5K Race is coming up on May 18 at Ford Field at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's in response to first responders' mental health to raise awareness and resources because they shouldn't feel alone when you have some mental disability or mental problems along with the jobs that you're trying to do and just bringing awareness to that. And last but not least, because I think we don't have this until our next council meeting, it may not be in time, but National Police Week is coming up, May 11 through 17. Started in 1962 with President Kennedy enacting that. Line of deaths in Michigan, we've had five of them in 19, or I'm sorry, 2024, and 165 police officers lost their lives in, in 2024 across the country. We've had several Dearborn police officers that had their lives taken while in the line of duty that should be recognized around that time also. But just remember our first responders and don't forget our dispatchers too. You know, they have their special day, telecommunications day that was not too long ago, but they have a job to do and it's a very difficult job to do. So anything we do to go ahead and recognize them is appropriate. So, thank you.
All right. Mayor, anything from the administration?
No, I think it was logic covered. This weekend, I participated in the firefighter burn drive firefighter competition. It was at Peace Park West.
Boy, I've seen that.
Yeah, you had to wear a 50-pound vest, carry a 20-pound hose up four flights of stairs, drop the hose, pull a rope up with the hose four stories, then rush back down, sledgehammer something, and then drag 190-pound body like 50 feet. Firefighter completed it in 2 minutes 27 seconds. I did it in 2 minutes and 36 seconds.
That's great.
Wow.
The good news is I whooped my younger brother. He was ahead of me. He was ahead of me and his body gave out five feet away from the line.
You got to run through the line.
So he did it, finished like 3 minutes and 30 seconds.
It's a mental state.
Let the younger brothers know, sit down.
Yeah, when you fall short, I mean, you even better off quitting in the beginning.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's great. Mr. Clerk, anything from your department?
Uh, nothing this evening, thank you.
All right. Next, we have our second public comment section. So anyone here to address the council regarding city business, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Right here in CNN, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion adjourned by Councilman Herrick. We are adjourned. Thank you all.